And we are live. I want to welcome everybody to our April 13th Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meeting to order and it is 7:05. And if everybody will please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, will never change and test us.
Thank you, and the reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution as annual reorganization meeting held on January 5th, 2021. The meeting set forth a schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and the press. Mr. Turner, would you like to do the roll call for attendance, please?
Mr. Allworth.
Here.
Mrs. Strappy.
Here.
Mr. Day.
Here.
Mrs. Prisco.
Here.
And Mrs. Freshy.
I am here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. And we are going to go into Dr. Dinesia with the superintendent's report, and he also has a presentation on the preliminary budget.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Freski. Good evening, everyone. I do have my superintendent report to give this evening, as usual, but we also have a budget update to provide to the board in public sessions. So the formal budget presentation, the annual budget presentation, will be at our next Board of Education meeting on April 27th. We will at that evening also be, the board will be adopting the annual budget for 2021, '22. This evening is a preliminary update just to give the board and the public an understanding of where we're at in anticipation of that meeting. So it won't go into the level of detail, but it's something we've been doing for the past several years in order to just provide that level of transparency as to the compilation of the work that we've been doing over the past five to six months of intensive discussion around our school budget, which has been even more important this year than ever before with all of the challenges we've been facing. So if you just give me a moment, I'm going to share my screen here, and then I'll do my superintendent update following this brief presentation. Okay, so the members of the board can see the presentation here in the high school learning commons, and the public at home can also view the presentation. And we will post this presentation as we do all of them on our district website under the district announcement section, and we'll also post it under our business tab, business office tab, and the Board of Education tab. So just to give everyone an idea of our budget timeline, kind of looking at, you know, where we've been and the amount of work that goes into the budget presentation. It seems that these days, we never stop talking about budget, which I, Mr. Turner and I would agree is a very good thing. That means that there's a lot of fiscal oversight into what we're doing and how we're managing as stewards of the public trust, Mr. Turner likes to say, the finances from the taxpayers to make sure that we're using it efficiently and we're being wise with how the dollars are being spent. So the conversation begins over the summer, but we really start to gear up in September, October, and by November, you know, the beginning of the school year in September, we start, once the school year gets going, we ask our administrators to start thinking ahead, believe it or not, to the following year as to what's on their list of expectations and goals, and to start compiling that list in anticipation of November and December. So typically by November, sometimes by December, we have those budgetary needs that are identified by the building principals and by our district administrators around facilities and curriculum and instruction, building-based needs, supplies, and also staffing, which is very fluid in us being able to address the evolving needs of our of our school district. By December, the goal is for my office with Mr. Turner to be able to have that information, because a lot of work needs to go into prioritizing and having ongoing discussions with our administrative team over the next several months. So by having that deadline in December, it sets us up pretty nicely to really pick up with those conversations in small groups in January, and then to continue to build on that and have ample time leading up to the preliminary budget, which is due this past year by March 19th. We had a special Board of Education meeting on March 18th. The budget, preliminary budget was due on that Friday. So it did not align, our scheduling did not align with being able to have everything completed in order to submit that, and we've done that successfully. And Mr. Turner's been working with the county office on that and having back and forth conversations, so everything seems to be in good working order. So that leads us now into the beginning of April, where we are at today on April 13th with the budget update. And then on April 27th, as I mentioned, will be the final public budget presentation and the public budget adoption. And then we always include on the calendar year, what we have in November. We have elections every year, and this year we have two seats that are up for election. So just to give everyone an idea, you know, there are two ways, but before we even go into talking about what the budget will include for next year, there are constraints that we deal with every year, and then we have to look at the historical perspective, and we also have budget variables that drive, whether it's year-to-year or over several-year period of time, drive the decisions that are being made. So we don't have a limitless supply of funding, and it's important to understand where our funding comes from in order to be able to understand how we're going to be able to thoughtfully and strategically accomplish our goals. So when we start with the budget constraints, it's important to have everyone understand, you know, that there is a cap, and the cap is a 2% cap on tax levy. That's the local taxpayer share here in Verona. So there is a limit on that growth, so we have to operate within the 2% limitation. And that went, that legislation was enacted in 2010. Based on the 2% cap on the property tax levy, it does prohibit increasing the budget without approval with second questions. So this is separate from a referendum, right? So if we want to go out for capital improvement projects, which we've done and done successfully, then that's a referendum question to be able to bring in that revenue from the local taxpayer and take advantage of debt service from the state of New Jersey in order to be able to accomplish those goals. That 2% cap on property tax limits us, but there's a way to bypass that if the, if there's taxpayer approval. And in that instance, we all know we've had success with full-day kindergarten in previous years, and also our focus on social, emotional learning and mental health supports. So those were, those were two questions that we put out to the community to see if that would be supported, and it was, and we're very grateful and thankful for that. Another constraint that's important to recognize is that we're, where we are at today, from 10 years ago, there, we've still had an impact. So back in 2011, there was a total cumulative loss that began in 2011 over the past 10 years that amounted to approximately $6 million. And that was in the reduction in state aid. So back in 2011, that was a pretty dramatic number. I want to say that that number that year was around $1 million, and it was, it was pretty draconian, not only in Verona but across the whole state. And each subsequent year, there were, there was a shortfall. So when you compound those numbers, that's a, that's a, it takes a hit to the school budget and how you're managing it. So it required Verona to be even more efficient with an already very low per pupil cost in an already efficient operation of the fiscal resources for the district. And last but not least, you know, these are just some key points. We can go into a whole dissertation around school budget and finance, but we're just trying to maintain the most salient points here. The school budget here in Verona is maintained by 95% of the local taxpayer share. So that does vary by community. So in Verona, that means that we are only receiving approximately 5% of aid from the state. And that's important for us to note. So the Verona Public Schools are funded primarily by the Verona taxpayer, and that does vary. There are other communities where 80% or 70% or less is funded by the local taxpayer share. And we're incredibly appreciative that the Verona community supports that. We do it all within these constraints of 2%, but that's an important highlight to understand as to, we cannot just go and do whatever we want to do as far as funding programs, because we have to operate within these fiscal, these fiscal boundaries. When we take a look at the budget variables, and these are the things that vary, they fluctuate year over year or over several years period of time. We take a look at how we can utilize the current resources more efficiently to stretch the dollar. And one of the things that we started to do seven years ago was instead of purchasing technology outright, we started taking advantage of incredibly low interest rates and being able to finance equipment in an effort to be able to strategically expand our initiatives and be able to get the technology into the teachers' and to the students' hands quicker, and being able to do that in a fine, in a fiscally sound way. So we found a lot of success with that, and we've taken advantage of those opportunities, similar to what many other districts have done. What we've also had a really great opportunity in doing, and this, this credit is due to Mr. Moriello as a Director of Special Services, to Mrs. Vinesia, our Supervisor of Special Education, our child study team members and our special education teachers across the district, and that's in building programs that previously did not exist. Identifying where needs were, being able to expand programs in our middle school, expand programs in our high school, and being able to work collaboratively with our, our community members in an effort to leverage the resources that we had, create programs for special education students here that did not previously exist. So that way, we can maintain students here in programs to best meet their needs within the Verona community. And over a period of time, what we start to see is that when we start doing this and doing it well, that our students start staying in district more, and that benefits the child and the family. It benefits our community, creating a diverse community of learners and allowing us to continue to evolve ourselves structurally and pedagogically to meet our students' needs. And there is also a cost benefit to that. If we can do it and do it with equal or better programmatic intervention than all, than having our students go out of district. And that's not to say that some students still don't more greatly benefit from going out of district. We do still have those situations, but what we see is over a five- and a 10-year period of stretch of time, we're able to keep more students in Verona and then take those resources and be able to invest them back into our special education program. Each year, the number of staffing retirements predominantly. Sometimes it's also resignations. It's, it's less of that. It's more of the retirements. There's an upside and a downside. The upside is, of course, you know, where, when we have retirements, you know, those salaries tend to be a little higher, so it's, we end up hiring people usually on lower on the guide, so there's a cost savings. There's a, there's a delicate balance there, because we're also losing staff members that are highly experienced and have a lot of experience behind them. So managing that is really critically important from a human resource standpoint and recruiting and retaining highly talented people. But there's a fiscal component to that, and that allows us to be able to look ahead and build in and do what we need to do each year, and that's balance a budget that we put forward to the county, to the state, and that we approve as a Board of Education. Whether there's an increase or a decrease in state aid, and we've had plenty of years where we've had decreases, this year we have another increase in state aid. So the past few years have been slightly more favorable for Verona. I wouldn't say they've been incredibly favorable, but they've been definitely been more positive. We've been receiving more money from the state. So we're appreciative of that, and there's been a lot of discussion over the years around the state funding formula. For Verona, I can only speak for Verona, we're trending in the right direction. We're still not quite there yet and being fully funded. And in other communities, they're actually trending in the opposite direction, so. But for right now, we're getting more money in state aid than we were getting two and three years ago. So that helps us, and naturally, if there's a decrease in state aid, that has a detrimental effect to us being able to balance our budget. And then part of tightening up the purse strings is each and every year, you have to be really effective of taking a look at how are we currently doing business? How are we managing staffing? How are we managing our purchases? How are we managing the use of the fiscal resources? And let's take a look at where there may be some efficiencies that we can further leverage, take advantage of, and, and repurpose funds and be creative and examining more closely how we're doing business, and do we still need to continue to invest our, our money in certain areas? Are there more creative ways to do it as, as just the nature of education continues to evolve and our needs continue to evolve? And what's also important to understand is that we're doing all of this through the lens of what does our strategic plan say? That was developed by our entire community of approximately 100 stakeholders, and we do that on a cycle every five years. So all of the funding that we receive from our, our taxpayers is intended to educate 2,300 students, to staff 350 people, operate six buildings and facilities, as well as driving the evolution of that strategic plan. So a lot of thought and collaboration and participation goes into being able to get us to where we are today. And the last budget variable to take advantage of, and once again, this number can go up and it may also go down. We like it when the number stays down. There have been years that the number has been up, and we, this year have been able to take advantage of a lower, I wouldn't say it's low, but lower healthcare premium increases. So there are still increases. It's not going in the negative direction. We're not recouping more money, but rather than having 10% or 20% increases in healthcare, the number is under 5%. But once again, remember, there's a 2% cap, so that's on tax levy, and then there are other pushes and pulls in the, in the budget that have an impact on us. So the next few slides, I'll be able to just provide a very general overview to give the board an understanding of what will, will next year's budget have in play. It will allow us, and we're in a really good position right now considering all of the challenges that we've had this year with the pandemic and looking ahead to next year and planning for a lot of unanticipated costs. And it's taken a lot of time and effort to be able to get to this point. Several weeks ago, we did believe that we were going to be in a position that we would have to reduce staffing in areas across the district. I'm happy to share with the public that that is not the case, that we are able to maintain all of our current and existing staffing. Now, what I'll also state to that point is that that's always contingent upon enrollment projections. And each and every year, we have, you know, probably the most noticeable area is we have class size at the elementary school where sometimes we have a few extra students that move into a specific school in a specific grade level over the summer and in the spring, and that causes us to go from two sections at a grade level to three, sometimes from three to four. And then there are always other instances where those grade levels kind of age up and go to the middle school, and there are, or students move out of town, and the number of students in a class, in a grade level will reduce down from three to two sections. So that's, that, there's variability there that happens each and every year. But all in all, we're keeping and maintaining all of our staff across the district, which is a really, really good story to tell. We're also able to invest our funding and be able to increase our elementary social worker, who is currently part-time at our elementary schools, providing mental health, social supports to our students, moving that person, that individual from 70% to 100%. So they'll go from part-time to full-time. And that's an area that we've heard from our, our principals and Mr. Moriello and our, our parents that, you know, we want to be able to continue to invest more and more resources wherever we can in order to support our students, especially in light of the challenges that are both our students and our teachers have encountered this year with the pandemic. It's critically important. It's also important to note that that is something that we continue to want to invest in long-term. It's not just for a one-year investment. Several years ago, when we, actually, I should, let me, let me counter that. Last year, we had a resignation in the assistant band director position at the high school. And based on the, I'll call it volatility, the uncertainty with what the school schedule was going to look like around in-person instruction. Based on that resignation, we made a decision at that time to pump the brakes, not replace the position until further notice. So we did not fill that position this whole year, but we're committed to making that investment, and we're able to fund that through our operating budget for next year. So we're going to be reinstating the Verona High School Assistant Band Director position to next year. That's a three-fifths position, 60%. And I know that that's a very welcome with open arms for the, the high school staff and for our students and our parents. And as we've mentioned, over the past several months, we have, Mr. Higgins is currently in the interim director of facilities role. We've made a commitment to reinstating that position. That position was, in effect, was reduced. It was a reduction in force back in 2018. I did have that role for the past almost three years. We turned that over to Mr. Higgins, who's done an incredible job in the facilities department for the past three years, and he's really stepped up and done a wonderful job this past year in the interim role. And over those two and a half, almost three years, we did save the district of about $450,000 in not having that role, but it's an important role. And Mr. Higgins has proven himself, so we're maintaining that role moving forward. One of the things that happened this year is we have our, our district HIV school safety specialist had resigned in the middle of the year for a position as a counselor in another district. We made a decision in the middle of the year not to replace that position. The, the, a big driver of that is, you know, we're in the middle of this pandemic. We don't have as many students in school. There certainly are still HIV cases, perhaps not to the level that we've had before. We do expect that we're going to need to continue to have this role. It's a requirement, but also by the state legislation, but also something that we've done in the past with our school counselors at the high school and the middle school and our child study team members at the elementary school. So prior to the previous hire of the sole person, the sole counselor as an HIV school safety specialist, we did have shared responsibility with our counseling and child study team departments. So we'll be going back to that model. That's important because based on the tight budget that we have, it allowed us to repurpose the funds from that position into some other positions, primarily being able to get and increase the mental health piece at the elementary school, which was key, as well as some, as some other positions as well. We're able to maintain all of our school and curriculum instruction and assessment accounts, so they stay flat at zero increase, but they get to be maintained. And that's really important for all of our accounts. That way, they have the necessary funding in order to get the dollars into the teachers' into the students' hands in the classrooms with materials and supplies. We get to maintain all of our district and school stipend positions. So that's critically important for our clubs and our athletics and all of the, the programs that we offer across the district and all of our schools. And we had to make sure that we're budgeting in advance for increase in costs. So this is a big variable moving into next year, because there is so much uncertainty as to what the school year will look like. Our goal is to be in school all day and figure out a way to make sure that we can get lunch to happen in the school year next year. With that, we're going to have to hire more substitutes and lunch aids. Lunch aids has been a real struggle. I know that we've had members of our community who've said that they would volunteer, or they would not volunteer, but step up and pay, and we get paid for the positions. Unfortunately, we haven't had a great turnout there. I believe we only have one person right now that's been hired for that position. It's been a struggle. So we may be forced next year in order to have coverage for lunch aids. We're, we're going to be looking at outsourcing, if we can't hire enough substitutes, outsourcing a company like Swing Education, who we've utilized this year for substitutes, to try to see what we could figure out. So as of right now, we don't have the definitive plan yet for what that looks like next year. We're working on what this year looks like. We are planning for next year and having a lot of discussions, but it's going to take a lot more work and effort and coordination to outline all of those details. So when we have more information on that front, we will certainly communicate it, communicate that out to the public. But that's a, that's a big variable there. That, that's a big number. And there's been a lot of, a lot of fluctuations in, in these numbers. I mean, you'll see, I believe that there's a board resolution on tonight for an increase in sub-costs just currently. We're currently, prior to our recent change at the elementary level, when we were 8:30 to 12:30. And at the middle school, we're still, you know, a four-hour day instructional day, but at the high school, we're going to be moving April 22nd to a full day. So our substitutes, whether you're a permanent substitute or just a, a varying substitute, that rate of pay is going to have to change, because now we're asking people to work longer. So there are board resolutions, there's board resolution on tonight to reflect that increased cost. And prior to this year, we were paying all substitutes $90 an hour. And you'll see, I think we'll be paying some substitutes approximately $168 or $170 a day. I'm sorry, not $90 an hour, $90 a day, and now $168 a day. So there's, it's almost doubling that, that cost, right? So we have to just monitor it, and it's, it's a, it's a balancing act. And then last but certainly not least, part of what also has helped us, because there was quite some anxiety around building a budget and the unanticipated costs going into next year with, you know, the need for all the needs about managing a pandemic and, and being able to still maintain and have PPE, building safety enhancements and, and addressing student needs and learning needs, mental health services and support. So we receive and are anticipating to receive more what are called ESER funds, and these are federal funds. We've heard be referred to as the CARES Act and S R two funds, and now there's a wave of S R three funds that should be coming our way. We have not yet received notification around what that amount is. We can kind of speculate based on the formula. But that is important, because we'll be able to address. This is just a snippet of some items that that money can go to. So it's, it's regulated by the federal government on how we could spend the money, but certainly you see a lot of different areas here, from facility improvements to professional development, to addressing learning loss, to making sure that we're meeting the needs of all students, and making sure that we're enhancing the, on top of all of the work that we're doing with the referendum, you know, examining what are the other mitigation strategies and technology enhancements that we could bring into our buildings and our facilities that will continue to make our schools safe from an indoor air quality standpoint, not only next year, but for years and years to come. So that's critically important, and how we use that money is, is going to be important. And we want to be able to address and utilize those funds from the federal government in the most efficient manner that gets us through next year and beyond. And as I mentioned earlier, the formal budget presentation that both Mr. Turner and I will give, which we will go into much more detail with all of the financials and the state aid, and it will be a brief summary of some of what I presented tonight around what does the budget quote-unquote buy us for 21, '22? That'll be at the April 27th meeting, and then that will be the actual formal public adoption by the Board of Education, so we could submit it to the Department of Ed. At this time, I'll turn it over to, to the board if you have any questions or comments.
I'm just going to kick off. Thank you very much for the preliminary budget presentation. And I, I'm really happy to hear that we are not reducing any staff positions. I mean, that is great news. I've been on the board in the year where it was really rough and a lot of people got cut. So that's great news. And I'm particularly happy about the elementary school social worker going from part-time to full-time because under. I mean, it's a need no matter what. Like you said, we did um, a referenda, a special question to enhance that and just to be. Moving that forward and have somebody uh move from part-time to full-time, particularly under the current circumstances. That's great news. So thank you very, very much.
And I just wanted to add, I, I, I know that we're adding the Director of Facilities, which is, I think will be. Very helpful knowing we have the referendum project that is being completed, but we also want to continue to maintain the buildings and. Have that oversight. Um, and I know Dr. Dinesio has done a great job for the last three years. Well, I'm running with it, but I think it is a, you know, a good time to be able to refocus his energies on. Day-to-day operations with the administration and have uh, somebody like either Mr. Higgins or, you know, the Director of Facilities that will be. Running with the operation on a day-to-day basis. So I think that's a, a great thing that we're adding uh, this particular budget.
I have a quick question regarding the S R funding. Um, I know. There had been some very brief preliminary discussion about potential usage for the S R funding. Um, particularly enhancements for um, our, our new HVAC system and the incoming new HVAC system. Have, have you gotten closer to making any decisions or are there any updates that you can give to that?
I can. So um, we have been, Mr. Higgins, uh, Mr. O'Brien, our project manager with Legacy Construction. Uh, and I've been part of some of those discussions as well with, with different um, companies and, and providers. We've been looking at what all of the technology is that's out there. Uh, I know that Mr. Higgins and Mr. O'Brien are looking at the literature. Um, and what the, not only the options, but the funding um, and uh, indoor air quality assessments and taking a look at. Uh, what the technologies are. So some of what we've looked at is bipolar ionization. We will look at dry hydrogen and these are all above and beyond enhancements to putting in the new system. And it certainly, um, we want to do things that will, look, look, indoor air quality. Um, has always been an important topic. Unfortunately, in many school districts, um, it, it has not been at the top of the priority list. And I don't believe any of us think that it's going away anytime soon. It will always be moving forward. A critical topic for us to stay on top of. So being able to continue to enhance above and beyond. You know, getting eight to ten air exchanges an hour on our units or in, installing MERV eight or on our new systems, MERV thirteen air filters. Um, those are all important. And then what else can we do on top of that? That will combat not only the spread of viruses, but the spread of bacteria or molds. Um, so we're still in the exploration phase. Uh, we hope that in the coming, I would say two, two months or so. We want to be able to be in a position to be able to do whatever work we're going to do and know what our funding is from S R. So that way we can implement additional enhancements over the summer. So they're ready to go for September.
And just a quick follow-up question. I know part of the S R funding, I think it was only like forty-five thousand was to be devoted towards mental health. It's not really, it's not, it's not a huge sum of money. What talk, I mean, where, where has the discussion gone with the use of that money?
So um, I know that Mr. Moriello is still in conversations and he has plans and he's formalizing them. So once he's ready with that, I'll be putting that forward to the Board of Education. So they're still in works with that now. Although there's forty-five thousand dollars and that is resolution number ten tonight to accept that funding from S R funds for S R two. Um, and you'll see that under the Mental Health Support and Services. Um, there is still an ability to be able to use other S R funds for mental health, student health supports. So it is not limited, that forty-five thousand is limited to mental health. But we can also allocate some of the other funding as well. And, and what's really important is, you know, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in PPE this year. And I'll just give you that as an example. Um, and, and this wasn't reflected in the presentation, so to speak, but. On that last slide where it says how we intend to use some of the S R funds. Being able to have to budget several hundred thousand dollars for PPE, that would have meant without S R funds, a reduction in staffing. Right? So that's why this S R funding is so critically important. We didn't have to budget for the PPE for next year and that's what helped us. So w- we're able to utilize the incoming S R funds to earmark it towards the PPE costs that we anticipate based on this year's experience. And that really helped us with the budget um, the past several weeks. Uh, but to answer your question again, yes, we can use other funds for mental health if Mr. Moriello's needs exceed the forty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
I would like to just add something after Dinesio. Um, so again, thank, um, this is great that no employees need to be cut out of budget, no teachers, no staff members. Um, however, I do want to um, say thank you to Jackie Fricki for being the person who's on the resolution for tonight. For stepping up to become a lunch aid in the district, which Dr. Dinesio just mentioned is going to be something we're looking for. Come September to get the kids in school for lunch. So I know Jack, Mrs. Fricki did mention at one of our meetings that she was going to. Um, you know, sign up to be a lunch aid. So thank you for doing that and anyone else out there would be um, benefit to the district. So spread the word to get, you know, volunteers out there to, not volunteers, but to sign up to become a lunch aid and help out. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Prisco. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Alworth, I want to leave you out. I don't see you behind the pole.
Um, I was, I was just happy to see the assistant band director brought back in.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's such an important role. I mean, the, the band director is a huge undertaking, especially with marching band and everything like that. And uh, I know, I know Mr. Lynch uh, appreciates that being put back in the budget. I, and. Just as a music teacher myself, that's an invaluable position. I'm glad, I'm glad that's back in.
And that's um, not only is it invaluable for the reasons that you noted, but it's such a large and thriving program.
Yeah.
Right.
So there's a lot of interest from our students and we want to continue to sustain that. So we're appreciative of the program uh, being able to sustain this year. Uh, without that position and certainly it was a very different year, but long-term it's, it's very good that we're going to be able to. Build that back in and, and hopefully build upon it moving forward. So if there are no other questions, then I will shift into um, my superintendent report. And I'll just start off by stating that there are uh, several resolutions. I don't know exactly which ones they are. I have it off the top of my head, but I do know. Um, that they're, they're in here. Oh, there they are, uh, two point five and two point two. Um, you know, I just would like to just highlight and note um, that there are some worthy uh, resolutions that I just want to point out to the board. This evening that um, we are sad to see a resignation um, for Mrs. Abovitz. Uh, she's been fantastic with our students. Um, and uh, she's been with us for several years and has done a tremendous job and she's going to be relocating with her family. So we are sad to see her leave, uh, but we thank her for her years of dedication to Verona. And um, we also have several retirements um, with some pretty important people who've. Made some significant contributions to Verona Public Schools, uh, to the district, to our students. Um, we have Mrs. Foley who served uh, most recently as the administrative assistant. At Lanning Avenue School. Prior to that, she was at HBW. Prior to that, she was at Central Office. So. Uh, she has worn a lot of hats and she's done it with positive energy and with a smile. Um, and she'll be missed. We have Mrs. Jarrow at second grade teacher at Forest Avenue School. Uh, she's been here a great number of years and. Has done a wonderful job and we're sad to see her, her leave us as well. She's, she'll be retiring this year. Mrs. McNeil, who is a co-principal at HBW School, um, has been here for over a decade and has certainly. Provided stability and contributions to HBW, to our students and our staff. Uh, we wish her well in retirement. Um, and last but not least, we have Mrs. Quick, our Verona High School English teacher. Um, you know, Mrs. Quick was also my son's teacher. Uh, she's just a, 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 she's a really challenging teacher. A positive teacher. She's motivating. Um, she's incredibly brilliant. Um, and my son still talks about her to this day. Um, not only about her as a teacher, uh, and, and what he learned in the classroom, but her as a person. Um, and she's just leaving a legacy here for all of our students and we wish all of them well in retirement. Um, and uh, as they embark on the next chapter of their lives. Shifting gears, I'd just like to thank uh, Sustainable Jersey Grant. I'm sure Mrs. Drappi can opine and speak to this, but. I'll start off and then I'll punt to her if she'd like to say anything. So I'm kind of greasing the skids for you here. Um, so uh, I'd just like to thank and also Mrs. Thomas, uh, who's been instrumental, uh, former HBW science teacher. Um, disclaimer, my former science teacher in Bloomfield, I say it, I'll say it every time that I have an opportunity. Uh, um, and then I majored in biology and chemistry in college. So she did a really great job. Um, so she um, she along with so many community members and Mr. Neal, Stephen Neal at the township and. I know Mrs. Drappi's been involved in it as well. Um, the, the community uh, garden project, uh, where the garden beds. Um, are being provided over at HBW next to Lot One, behind the old Terry's Lot near the HBW gym. Um, beautiful new beds. They, they uh, just had um, the other day, right? There was the ribbon cutting ceremony on Friday. And uh, you know, a great photo op and it's a great opportunity to bring the community together. Um, and it is partly uh, funded by the Sustainable Jersey Grant. So um, Mrs. Drappi, is there anything else you'd like to add? I know you've been very involved in the project.
Um, I, I was involved, very involved in the project um, in the beginning and then once they turned the board and. The world fell apart. Um, I had to take a step back and a big thank you to Mrs. Thomas for seamlessly stepping into that role. And taking it further than I could ever imagine. Um, I guess the only thing I really wanted to say was that this is, this is really the best example of what happens when we have a township. Part, great partnership with the Board of Education and the use of the property that was just empty green space at the time is now. Being utilized sustainably and is being utilized for beautification and for community. Um, yeah, and it's really, really exciting. The learning beds are there. I encourage everybody to go by and just take a peek. Um, through the fence and apply for a bed. It's through a lottery system and that, that application can be found on the township website. And it's really exciting. We're very excited for it. Thank you.
Thank you. What we're really excited about too is um, once again, shifting gears is that uh, last Tuesday. Uh, as we all know, April sixth, we had our elementary students be able to come back to school in one cohort. Um, so lots of smiles on not only students' faces, but a lot of parents' faces too. Um, which is really great and um, you know, it's, it's been an adjustment, but oh, one that I think is working well and the feedback that I've received. Um, we still have more work to do, um, but it's nice to see the students back in in one cohort. Um, I do know that the uh, opt-in is over ninety percent uh, choosing to come into school in person. Um, so that's been really great. Uh, and just to recap, the reason we were able to finally be able to shift to. Uh, getting into one cohort at the elementary schools uh, is because of the recently updated guidance from the CDC. Uh, which would then followed with the New Jersey Department of Health, moving the physical distancing guideline from six feet to three feet. And by anticipating, we had been anticipating that coming and we were working for, for several weeks and months on. How we were going to be able to do it and the teachers and the principals did a terrific job and being able to adjust on, on very short notice. Um, and it's been very good. So that's still an eight thirty to twelve thirty day with uh, lunch at home and remote learning in the afternoon. Um, so that's been very, very positive. Um, we uh, also have a, a number of weeks back. Well, well before the CDC and DOH changed their guidance, we had a lot of meetings coming out of the parent elementary committee meetings. And then the teacher meetings um, that we were having with administrators and with principals and with our staff. Um, and, and one of the things that came up was in anticipation of the impending change to the guidance. Um, would we consider, as it's been discussed all year, bringing in desk shields? So that is something that we committed to a number of weeks back. Mr. Higgins placed the order. Uh, we did finally get those shields in. Um, we installed them. Um, we did then have the CDC then remove that guidance, but the DOH. Um, kept it in still as a mitigation strategy that school districts could consider. So we decided that we were going to keep it in play and we have done so uh, so far. Uh, the classroom teachers and the administration, they continue to, continue to monitor the pros and cons of the desk shields as an additional strategy. They've been helpful, um, as the principals have shared in kind of identifying and isolating the spaces with the desks. Um, because now we have students a lot closer to each other. Um, it is something that they continue to discuss. There have been some visibility issues that the principals have been working on with the teachers. Um, positioning of students, um, taking a look to see what modifications could be made. Um, and just taking a look at, you know, this mitigation strategy and if it's something that moving forward, what the pros and the cons are. Um, and making sure that we're continuously adhering to the six feet. Um, and we'll continue to evaluate the necessity of, of the desk shields. Uh, so as of right now, we're going to continue with them. Um, we'll see how things roll out over the next several weeks and making the adjustments. And taking the feedback from the teachers, the principals are in a lot of discussions with them and some parents have reached out to us with some concerns. Um, some of the parents who reached out to us initially last week, uh, a lot of those concerns are now dissipating. Some other parents still have some concerns over those. So the principals are monitoring and they'll continue to talk to the teachers about it. Um, and they'll give us an update as we move forward um, as to what next steps will be. Um, if we're going to be keeping them or if in time it's something that um, could go away and if they're going to be needed. The middle school recently shifted from a three-day cohort to a two-day cohort. So that's very positive news as well. So continuing to evolve the schedule. Still a four-hour instructional in-person day with uh, remote learning in the afternoon for the majority of our students. Um, that began on Monday, April fifth, that first day back from break. Um, and we're still maintaining the six feet between students um, and between staff because of the CDC and the DOH guidance. Based on the risk level within the regional risk matrix on the COVID activity level reports. Um, so and, and the same is true of Verona High School. We still have to maintain the six feet of distancing. Uh, between uh, not only students, but with staff as well. Uh, our continuation, we're currently at the high school, we're in a two-cohort model. Um, that may or may not change for the fourth marking period. Uh, as the high school administration is evaluating the, the student slash parent responses for an intent to be in person. Um, we did share out in a, a, a communication, I, I believe it was March twenty-sixth and an update to the, to the community. Um, the high school parents and students have an opportunity uh, to determine if they want to be in person or not. Uh, and there's some accountability there for making sure that if you choose to be in person, that you're coming in person because. We want to make sure that we're maximizing the number of students who have access to be able to come in person if they so choose. That remote out learning option is still on the table for pre-K through twelve for all students until the end of this year. Um, at a minimum. Um, and uh, in an effort to continue to evolve the high school schedule, uh, based on the cohort model effective April twenty-second. The first day of the fourth marking period, um, that will be in-person full day for the students who decide to come into school. So instead of leaving around eleven fifty, twelve o'clock every day, um, there will be an open campus for all students. Um, students can go home or out to lunch, um, or if parents decide that they want to have their child stay at school. As long as there, there's no inclement weather, they can do a grab and go lunch or bring their own lunch and, and they'll eat outside and we're going to make accommodations for that. Socially distanced, of course, and following the guidelines and then having the afternoon session in school uh, for in-person learning. So the high school will run full day for the fourth marking period. We're going to take advantage of that good weather. And we're also going to use this as a learning opportunity to kind of work out the details. So that way we can look in advance for next year. For September as to how we're going to manage and operate our schedule. Um, and we've been working with our food service company, Pomtonian, who's been extremely helpful um, the whole way through. And then last but not least, and I know we have a couple of updates tonight, but I'd be uh, remiss if I didn't congratulate some of our wrestlers, especially Dean Palmer, who. Um, logged in his hundredth win the other night, which is an incredible accomplishment on the Verona High School wrestling team. So congratulations to Dean on his 100th career win and going down in the record books here at Verona High Schools. One of the best wrestlers of all time. This is a major accomplishment. And also congratulations to Dean and to John Pavia and to Jaden Chupak, who all three of them are going to Regions. So also incredible accomplishments. So a lot to be proud of. And I know we have a lot of other accomplishments for all of our students, but those are definitely worth noting. And that's it for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Dini. Yeah. I, I want to jump in on the retirements. Because with Mrs. Quick, Mrs. McNeil, Mrs. Jarro, Miss Foley, through my tenure as a parent, and I've worked with Ms. Foley at schools when I was a paraprofessional. And as for Ms. McNeil and Mrs. Quick and Mrs. Jarro, they have touched the Freski household personally and many, many times over many, many years. And I reached out to each of them personally to just thank them, like you said, for their dedication, their professionalism, the passion that they brought to the classroom. My kids still talk about all of them and we have special memories. So if you're listening and if not, you all got my email. Thank you so much and best of luck on your next journey, on the next portion of your, your life's journey. You will be missed.
I too, I want to give a personal thank you to Mrs. Foley, who has single-handedly carried the Drappi girls through Lanning. And you know, any teacher knows that the lifeblood of an elementary school is the admin assistant and the nurse. So Mrs. Foley has been invaluable in that school. So I just wanted to give her a personal thank you as well.
And I want also, my oldest child had Mrs. Jarro and absolutely loved her class, learned so much, had so much fun. She was always positive, made everything fun. You know, if, if I remember, she ended every Friday with a dance party. Like it was, it's, she was fantastic. And my, my son came home thrilled every single day. So I don't know if she's listening, but thank you, Mrs. Jarro. My, my, my son absolutely loved your class and you did a wonderful job and congratulations.
I was just going to do a shout out to Mrs. McNeil. When I moved in this town, you know, I always heard stories, you know, all, all the good things about elementary school, high school is great. I've always heard about the middle schools. Oh, you gotta watch out for the middle school. Well, I know when Mrs. McNeil came in town, everything changed. And as far as I know, it's the new sheriff in town. And the middle school, everything mellowed out. I think that the students really were able to learn in a, in a, I guess, I want to say more inclusive and transparent and open type format where the, the teachers were able to do what they needed to do. I think it was just trying to bring everybody together and, and work to a common goal at the middle school. So Mrs. McNeil did that. I know I was involved stopping by a couple dances. She was chaperoning and she did everything. And so I just wanted to, you know, of course, my kids went through the middle school and I, I think she did a wonderful job over those years and she'll be missed and want to wish her well on her next venture. So, but thank you again, Mrs. McNeil.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments in regard to Dr. Dini's superintendent report? If not, thank you very much. We're going to roll into the committee reports. And we have Mrs. Prisco and Mr. Allworth with athletics.
I'll, I'll take it. Sure. Okay, perfect. Okay, so athletics, the volleyball and wrestling teams are winding down. Right now volleyball is involved in the sectional tournament, which starts on Thursday. Hopefully followed by game Saturday and Tuesday. They, they should be doing pretty well. So we're, we're pulling, we're pulling for them. The team did really, really well this year. Wrestling, Dr. Dini, so just touched on Dean Palmer and his tremendous accomplishment. That is really, really impressive for anyone who's ever wrestled, but that's really, really difficult to do and really impressive. So congratulations to him. There are three matches, matches left for the wrestling season. And then there, as Dr. Dini has said, there's a number of students who are continuing on into the regional tournament. So we're wishing them luck. And I know Ms. Prisco and I were amazed that we made it through the wrestling season without having to cancel anything on, on our end due to COVID. That's so that it's a testament to the coaches and the, the, the wrestlers on how seriously they took all the protocols and, and did that. So very, very impressive. Spring season is up and running. They're starting to get a lot of the scrimmages going. There's a little overlap with, you know, the end of the volleyball and wrestling, but for the spring seasons are, are practicing and they're getting scrimmages going. And those seasons should be getting rolling soon. The baseball bleachers were just painted and they look great for the new season. So that is, they're, they're looking really, really good. We've hired, we, hopefully we'll be hiring a new bus driver tonight, which will help, help the district get all these, get everybody where they need to go. That's definitely a good thing. And I think that was, did I miss anything?
No. I'm just going to add a couple of little quick comments on the girls volleyball did win their conference against West Essex. So
There you go.
Congrats to them. They're really an amazing team. So again, like you said, they're playing third, this Thursday. Also, congrats to Dean Palmer. I've known him since kindergarten and just a great accomplishment for him and being, I think he's the ninth
Yes.
athlete in Verona wrestler to make that accomplishment of 100 wins. So just a great kid all around. So congrats to him again. I do have to say, I watched that match the other night. I tuned in against Cedar Grove to, to watch. And I, I didn't realize there was two mats going on and you had to switch to the second mat. But I did get to see Mr. Merkler in action cleaning the mats. And it was very impressive to see how that works, how they had the mats going and just to keep it all moving. And I could say that's one of the reasons why I think our boys stayed so healthy. So thank you to Mr. Merkler and to Mr. Foster for sanitizing those mats so well. And again, the rest, to the rest of the boys. And I was at the baseball game today and this place was hopping. And it was great to see all the cars. Lacrosse had games, softball, baseball. I think they were all scrimmages. I know baseball was a scrimmage, but it was just nice to see parents, kids, beautiful day. Facilities look great out there. So kudos to everybody involved to making, you know, a positive because today was definitely a positive up here. So thank you all.
Thank you, Athletics Committee. Also, we had education committee meet and that was Mr. Allworth and Mrs. Drappi.
Yep. You want me to take it since you did? Um, not much to update. I think, let's see, let's scroll to the top here. So the Diversity Council had its first meeting on March 16th, which we talked about the last meeting. And we have three committee sessions coming up on the 20th, the 21st and the 22nd. Working, and but that committee members only need to attend one of the three sessions. And we'll be focusing on curriculum and instruction and professional development, recruiting and hiring and community outreach, and then the district school and school climate and the culture and educational equity. Mr. Jackson and Mr. Stevenson continue with the math professional development. April 27th is grade two, April 28th is grade three. And April 29th is grade four. Map growth assessment, family reports are shared with the elementary parents and guardians on Friday, the 16th. Thank you to the teachers and students and parents for their support and able to work out all the kinks. And it went off without a hitch after that. I think the biggest news is that maybe for the first time in history, but first time in a really long time, the New Jersey Association of School Administrators and the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association and the NJEA all issued a joint statement agreeing on something. And the statement reads, "We are pleased that the U.S. Department of Education has stated that the New Jersey's plans, New Jersey's plan to replace the NJSLA standardized test with more appropriate assessment tools fully complies with the federal requirements under ESSA." New Jersey students will not have to see, will not have to see their instruction time interrupted to take tests that are not helpful or appropriate under current conditions. Districts and the state will be able to use alternative forms of the assess, of assessment to gather useful data that will help identify and support student needs. This is a win for New Jersey students and families as we continue our work to support the social, emotional and academic needs of students during and after the pandemic. In short, NJSLA was canceled. Yes, you can all celebrate after this. Okay. Today was SAT, SAT testing set up by Ms. Catalata for grade 11. And PD for, for language arts with Dana Clark and Mr. Shells. It will be on April 22nd for grades five and six and April 30th for grade seven and eighth. And observations are ongoing. And I think that was it. Did I miss anything? Oh, yes. Oh, yes. That was the other thing I wanted to bring up was the ESL testing.
So shortly after our meeting, the following day, the New Jersey Department of Education is requiring all districts to administer the access for L's assessment by June 5th. Ms. Venese is working with her ESL teacher, Ms. Boyne, and the administrative teams to set up locations at each building and schedules. And also to ensure that CDC guidelines are met during the testing procedures.
So in person?
Yeah.
Okay.
All families with students receiving ESL services will receive notification of the testing dates for their students by the end of next week. So it will be in person.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions in regard to the education committee update? No. And Dr. Dini, so did you want to go back and add something?
If I read I actually was going to, but Mrs. Drappi covered it in the education report. So all good.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then we did, I believe, facilities, buildings and grounds for that, which is Mrs. Prisco and Mr. Day.
Sure. I can run with it. Oh, go ahead. I thought you said run. Oh, you're doing, okay.
I'm unmuted, aren't I? I should be unmuted.
You're good.
I'm good. So for building and grounds, we met yesterday, a couple of updates. The window project, good news. The window project for HBW, the upgrade is 100% complete. FM Brown is 99% complete. So just a couple of punch item things to take care of. So we should be done with that in short order. I know Mr. O'Brien is on the phone there with Mr. Higgins and they're working to make sure that is completed. In regards to the HVAC, during spring break, the contractors are able to go in there and do some preliminary rough piping and some work that will get the AC HVAC system up sooner than later, right? So the, the goal is to get it running as soon as we can. So again, trying to be smart and do it when the students are not in school. So the rooftop units were delivered and placed on site by the, by the roofs. And 95% of the classrooms have HVAC units that are located in New Jersey. So now they are, they're, they're and received and now they're in New Jersey and being stored nearby facilities. The trenches for the new transformers have been completed at FM Brown and Lanning. So we're preparing for those transformers at FM Brown and Lanning. So regarding the bipolar ionization adapters that we might be putting on to our HVAC ventilation systems, Mr. Higgins and Mr. O'Brien are talking to different companies to review their products, their effectiveness and the pricing and installation options. Another item is about the curved wall in VHS. I don't know if you have a chance to go into the VHS lobby, but the tile work and signage was, is now completed. It looks amazing. It's a curved wall. It's a, you know, sort of you walk into the school and you see this wall and it's very impressive. So, and that was completed over spring break. And the last item, and Mr. O'Brien, maybe you could give us an update on that. As you know, we had some heavy rain recently and there, there was a, a minor leak that took place in HBW. A contractor was here today. It was supposedly resolved, but maybe Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Higgins, if you have just a chance to give us an update. I know that a couple of folks had reached out to us from the public and just wanted to give an update to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Yes, around 11 o'clock Monday morning, I received a phone call from the custodian, H.B. Whitehorn, explaining that he found a leak in the faculty bathroom on the second floor. I told him I'd meet him there in five minutes. Upon my arrival into the bathroom, I noticed that half the ceiling tile collapsed in on it, on the floor and in the sink. I took a picture on, took a picture of where the leak was coming from and sent it over to Mr. O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien called me back within five, 10 minutes later and told me that he contacted the roofer and they would be out today. So now I'm going to kick it over to Mr. O'Brien and he can better explain what the roofers did.
Thanks, Joe. Yes, the roofers were out today. We investigated the area. It was a complex roof area where the roof overhang on an portion of the building tied back into an existing roof area. So it made the area during the project a very tight area and not very accessible. So there was a replacement that needed to happen during the project that was installed. But you know, unfortunately, that, that placement did not hold in that, that area. With the rain and probably the snow over the winter with that weight, it just, it caused an issue in that, that area. When we identified it, we found a solution with the repair that was needed in that area with the engineers and architects. I spoke directly to the town construction official as well, informed him of the issue. And as well as let him know what we'd be doing to fix it. That was done today. And we will be finding out probably the next 48 hours with the rain, if that solution is sufficient. And we will also be looking at similar areas to make sure that we don't have additional problems coming up in the future. So at this point, I would, I feel that this is an isolated incident. And we will also be having the contractor repair the stained ceiling tiles and the one broken ceiling tile, once this is confirmed complete.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Higgins and Mr. O'Brien for the updates. I'm sure we're, we're, we're in good hands with you all heading up the project and working with the roofing crew. So thanks again. And that's all we have for building and grounds. Anything else to add, Mrs. Prisco?
Got it all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions or comments. So thank you. Do any of the other board members have any questions in regards to facilities?
I, I just want to make sure I understand right. So the preliminary rough piping, was that in all five schools? Was that completed in, in all four elementary and for HVAC?
Mostly.
The contractors did preliminary rough piping. Okay. Okay, that was it. That was my question. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we are going to open up to public comments on agenda action items to be approved. So if there's any questions or comments in regard to the resolutions from the public, now would be the time. If you do raise your hand, Mr. Roberts will let you into the meeting. And please state your name and your address. And there is a five-minute limit. Thank you very much.
No hands at this time.
There were no hands up at this time. So we are going to continue on to our discussion items. And that would be any old business or new business that the board wanted to address. Is there anything? The only thing that I'm going to update on is, um, the board has been working in conjunction with the VA in mediation sessions. So I just wanted to give an update on that. Discussions are still going on. Mr. Roberts met this morning with Mr. Locata, the mediator, and Mr. Delgado from the NJEA. And we did propose that we can meet this evening if they were available. We knew it was short notice and that wasn't able to happen. So we're working to get another session on the dates for the week of we're working to get another session on the dates for the week of April 26th. So everybody is looking at their calendar. So we are going to continue on with that. That was the only real update that I had. Did anybody have any questions or anything else? All right. So then we are going to move on to do a roll call and vote on the resolutions. And we have I need a motion to accept resolutions number one through 13. Moved by Mr. Day. And second by Mrs. Droppi. Is there any question or comments or discussion on any of the resolution items?
I guess I just had a quick question for resolution number nine. So I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. The increase for the per diem daily rates for the substitute teachers is because of the increase in day, increase in the amount of time that the substitutes will be engaged.
That's correct. It's, it's prorated. So the $168 amount previously was $120 per day. So it was prorated based on the number of hours. And the same thing holds true for the $90 now becomes 126. So those are the new rates for any substitutes who are working the full duration of the day.
And how, and I don't know if this is an answer you can give me right now, but how does that compare to the districts around us, like in terms of what we're, what we're offering?
I don't know what they're paying substitutes at this point. I know a lot of the districts are paying more than what they did previously.
Yeah.
But then these numbers far exceed what most districts were paying pre-pandemic. For sure. I do know that there are other districts that are even paying north of $200 per day up in Upper Bergen County.
Is that it? Then I am going to ask Mr. Turner to read the role to vote on the resolutions.
Mr. Allworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Droppi?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
And Mrs. French?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to these public comments on any items. And again, I will ask Mr. Roberts to please do the honors and anyone having a question before you speak to please remind you that there's a five minute limit and to state your name and your address before beginning. Thank you very much. And I'm going to go on mute.
I show no hands at this time. Okay. Mike Dupree?
Good evening. Mike Dupree, 47 Cypress Avenue. Thumbs up if you can hear. Thanks. Main comment is about the desk shields, but before that, I share the thrill of a lot of elementary parents for seeing all the kids go back into school. You know, four half days last week and hopefully five half days all week this week. It's drop off and pickup is, the energy is amazing. It's, you know, you get consistency. You have peers seeing each other for the first time this year. It's amazing. So I would, I would echo the sentiments that were discussed in the superintendent's report about happiness and smiles. Real quick on the lunch aids. What might be helpful for community, like increased participation is maybe clarification via email or some other form on what's required. I think there was some confusion around volunteer versus paid. You know, the requirements of potentially like every single day for two days a week, having that available with work schedule. So I think more people might if they knew what exactly was entailed. I also, like I signed up and sort of my wife, we never got a follow up about it. So I'm also concerned that maybe people signed up that didn't finish the registration process correctly or or maybe didn't get a look. So just a quick comment on lunch aids. Maybe there would be an opportunity to just educate the, the, the community more on what's required there to increase potential signups to help for later this year. Do the desk shields look like, I think people were surprised because the notice came very, 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 you know, last minute, like a day before we went in. Certainly, it, you know, it's listed as a consideration. It's the, it's the 12th bullet point in the list of 12 bullet points of mitigation potential in the NJDOH updated guidance. It says only where feasible. It is not a recommendation or requirement. The language is the softest by far on all of the mitigation strategies that they're offering. And look, it's only been a week and I would argue against the fact that like the complaints have dissipated. I just think people are, you know, they, I think they got them out early and I think it's they're trying to wait and see, I think, as you are, but you know, so far they fall down a lot, causing a ton of distraction. I think teachers would share this concern. If we're concerned about keeping teachers six feet from the students, that certainly doesn't help them as they have to go, go next to the student to pick up the desk shield and put it back on the desk. So there's a safety concern there. The white borders impair visibility. The shields themselves impair audibility for the teachers and the students, which is already tough with the masks. You know, they impact the emotional connection with students. They, they don't seem to affect our quarantine protocols. They restrict airflow, which is going to become more of a concern as the weather warms. And I think more importantly than anything, the efficacy has never been proven. So when the CDC updated its guidance, Greta Mizetti of the CDC stated herself, "We don't have a lot of evidence of their effectiveness in preventing transmission." So they removed it. So I guess that the main question is sort of like, what is the point? What purpose do they serve other than the feeling of comfort? I know some families have expressed that. I would say that the families who, who, who might feel better about it, I mean, the decision to to opt in to the classroom was made prior to the desk shield announcement. So I would, I would imagine that those families did not know if the desk shields are going to be in play or not. But is there, is there a solution where if families are concerned about it, which I totally respect, can have that for their students? But maybe not all the students. We did a straw poll in, in, in a social media group and certainly you can argue bias here, but of 105 respondents, 77 were against the use. 21 were indifferent, which is 20% and seven were in favor, which is 6%. So if you were to extrapolate out to extrapolate that out to the larger community, this percentage just might look different, but you're going to get an overwhelming majority that would like them removed. And perhaps a quick survey would, would, would allow for some feedback after a week or two of having them in there. So look, if the key point of getting the kids back in school is to increase academic learning and social emotional connection, these desk shields seem to be doing the opposite for that. They disrupt the class. They make things harder on the teachers and students and they don't seem to have a lot of data around their efficacy. So yeah, that's fine. So I guess, you know, I'm just sort of stating what I've heard from the students, the staff, the community, trying to speak on some others behalf and ask for the continued consideration of having them removed. I know you're considering it. I know it's, it's touch and go, but every single day like we're so happy they're back in, like we're almost there. We know lunch isn't going to happen this year. We know this is pretty much it.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I think there's one more. Julia Allen?
Hi, everyone. Julia Allen, 116 Elmwood Road. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I actually do have some feedback from some of the teachers that I've spoken to also about desk shields. So I figured I would just tell you what I heard from the teachers. I also do echo Mike's sentiments. The issue for me at least was more specifically around how it was communicated. And as you guys might know, I work in communications and marketing and a lot of what I do is about the timing of communication. We are all very, very excited that our kids are back in school, especially the elementary level. Could not be any happier. This is what we've been hoping for all year long. And here we are finally in April, five days a week. So that came with a, an announcement the day before the kids were going back in school that they were going to be fitted with desk shields. So they weren't really excited about it, I have to tell you. But it's less about what I feel as a parent and less about what my children feel because they can get used to anything. But it's really about how the teachers feel and, and I've just been collecting some feedback from some of the teachers that I speak to on a regular basis. And in addition to all of the things that Mike said around some of the practical issues of being able to hear and see the children. They're also saying that there's no sense of community. And that part of it actually is what bothers me a lot because there is a lot of community that, Dr. Dini, you mentioned earlier, that we do want our, our community to be diverse community of learners. You mentioned that when we were talking about the special ed classes. And, and although there has been some progress made, especially at Lanning with having the desk shields removed from the special ed classes because their, their number of students didn't change, that really doesn't affect the rest of the classes and the kids are very, very happy to be in. But this idea of sense of community really is something we pride ourselves on in Verona and I just want to bring that up. The word prison has actually come up a couple of times, which is a little bit of a shock to me, to be honest. I'm not sitting there in the classroom every day. So I don't know what that's like, but that feels, you know, they're kind of, they're, you know, surrounded on three sides. And, you know, they can't be seen, they can't be heard. They're falling down, they're a distraction. So, you know, there's a lot of things. I'm sure you've heard it all. But I just want to make sure that folks are hearing that these concerns are coming from the teachers and the staff as well as the parents. And, you know, I, I'm just passing along some information that I heard. So I hope you'll consider it. And, you know, thank you guys for, for getting these kids back in school. Thank you to the CDC and New Jersey Department of Health and Phil Murphy and everybody else. But we are here and we're happy to be here. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think we're good.
Show no further public comment at this time.
Okay, close that. So with that, thank you for your comments. Everybody is listening and everything is taken into consideration. So we do thank you for calling in. And at this point, our next meeting is, where's my page? Oh, April 20, okay, April 27th. I lose my page. It's here. Tuesday, April 27th confidential session at 5:30 with public session at 7:00 PM. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Mrs. Droppi. Second by Mrs. Prisco. And all in favor say aye. And we will see you all in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Stay well.
Stay safe, everyone. Have a good night.